I'll do a provol agenda, just to start.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Oops, Mike's not here.
Uh-oh.
He's doing some research. But what I'm getting to is Rick Hudson, our emergency manager, is going to do a little presentation on current events. So while we're waiting for Mike to come back, we'll just go ahead and get started because it's going to be a long evening. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor. And it is going to be a long evening, so I'm going to get right to it. What I wanted to present to everybody here tonight, the council and the guests and citizens, is where we've come in a short period of time with how we're going to message out information to the public. I want to give a little bit of tale of where we came from just recently and then how it's going to translate and especially how we're dealing with this current virus that's happening. In January, we had a weather event that affected the city quite drastically. During that time, we actually opened up the Emergency Operations Center. We did not declare an emergency, but we started the EOC at that period of time in January, and we monitored those weather events. During those weather events, we were able to notify council and staff when we had significant changes, and that was usually done via email. And it was fairly effective, but we also realized at that time that we needed to be a little bit more proactive with getting information out to the citizens. At that time, the emergency management website was under construction, and it wasn't quite ready to handle any kind of messaging that was going to be proactive and ongoing. So we put a lot of work into updating the emergency management website, which I'll show just briefly tonight. And with that opportunity also came, we were starting to get ready to start putting things on the website and message out to the community and to make sure city council had an idea of what was happening. We started monitoring the coronavirus in early February, and it was nothing to be reported on other than this is an event we as staff had talked about what was happening with that, and we were just kind of curious about, well, how would we handle that here? I took that message and information to the county. They were also aware of what was happening on a national level, and we had some communications in place. One thing that's real important for everybody to realize is that when I'm dealing with information that's coming down, what we don't do is we don't listen to media or social media. What we do is we focus on the facts. And there's a lot of agencies out there, whether it's the CDC, the Office of Emergency Management with the state of Oregon, FEMA, NOAA, National Weather Service, Clatsop County, Department of Public Health. We are talking to those agencies. One of the things that can really hamper us during these events is to react to something that's not factual, and it's important that we don't do that as a group here. Because when you're getting information from us, it needs to be consistent with what the county, state, and federal is talking about. Doesn't mean we can't add information that's local. The key is we can't, we really need to make sure that we're not putting out conflicting information. With that being said, on February 21st, Oregon Health Authority actually put out, they established a 211 hotline that they would let people and advertise that people could call that 211 hotline and get information on the virus. At that time, that was a Friday afternoon. We didn't get the information that they started that until that Monday, which was the 24th. On the 25th, we were able to add it to our website. Where I'm putting it, it is, I have our website up right now, is I added that to our current topics. When you guys go onto the Cannon Beach website, when you see it, it looks like this, correct? Has everybody had a chance to get onto our website? When you do it, this little current topics is not opened up. But what we're doing right now is we're adding that. So if you look at that activation of the 211 virus, we actually put that on there on the 25th. What I didn't have an opportunity to do was notify the council that we did that. And I was talking to the staff here at City Hall. Now, the interesting thing about that 211 notification is, is there was nothing really happening in the state at that time. On the 28th, Oregon reported its first case of the coronavirus, and that was a Friday evening, and that came out. Basically, that came out in the media. When that happened, not a lot of information was done on those official websites. So when it hit the news, it didn't come through the normal channels where it should come through the fed, state, local counties, or to the cities. It actually just came out on the media. When that happened, that created a panic. And over the weekend, we all kind of felt that that happened. Over this past weekend, people were rushing to the stores. It was the topic of discussion, and people were all, well, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? And why aren't we doing more? The key is, we don't even know what happened until we watched the news. Over that weekend, the state and local resources had to unwind that machine and put together their messaging in order to start getting it out correctly. And some of the things that came out was, they were trying to deal with all the misinformation about masks and how masks are not actually healthy and not recommended to be using, and they can be dangerous in some certain circumstances. And we all basically had to take a pause. Then on that Monday, we started getting information, and we were able to put up the official information about that from Oregon Health Authority, and then on top of it, we put the Clatsop County. I was able to then message that to our city council and to our employees. And that was factual information that came out through it. What we felt over the weekend really couldn't have been avoided. It was not official information, and it was not accurate. And so when you guys, you guys get concerned about that, we want you to inquire with the city of what's going on. We want you to inquire with the county of what's happening. But the key is this: it's not because we're not paying attention. We've been monitoring this for over a month, and we've been paying attention to it. We just weren't notified. And so it was the stress on the county that you guys all felt, and so did I. I felt it as well. I had a lot of people asking us questions, and we're like, we don't know exactly what is happening right now. And then we were able to get some stuff out. The positive thing that all of this is coming out to is, we were able to start ramping up our messaging with the city, and it's working. We also, at this time, we have, on the emergency management website, which is now up and running, if you click on Emergency Management or on the basic webpage, you're going to see all this information under Incident Information. It's going to be duplicated. And you can see where these three things have been added to that. So no matter where you look on our website, you should see information in two different places, but the exact same information. So even if you get lost in it, under the main page or under Emergency Management, it's in both locations, and we'll continue to monitor that. With that being said, we also checked with our Chamber of Commerce, and we also did a little brief review on what we're doing here at the public building. If we had to shut down a public building, or if we had to shut down an event with Chamber, we're at least now talking about how to do that correctly so that we don't panic, so that we don't overreact, and we don't create chaos. And we're going through those steps right now. So there's a lot of questions about this virus, and I don't really want to get into the dynamics of it, but it is essentially a flu virus. And with that, we want you, we direct you to the Oregon Public Authority, which is basically what Clatsop County has up and running. And it's right here. So right now, it's got, as in March 2nd, which was Monday, and the four local cases have been discovered in this county. It's got some information of how it started, and then it's also got the everyday actions of what we should be doing. The good thing to realize about this is, believe it or not, we are actually way ahead of this as an information. We only got behind the power curve for basically 48 hours. But it wasn't because we weren't paying attention. It really is just because we were not informed, and neither was the county or the state, until they had to catch up with it lately. I promise to you guys that we will always put this information on the website. When that does happen, I need to do better about notifying the city council and the employees a little bit faster. When I start around the 25th, I should have let them know. My goal will be to continue to do that. The best part about this is, now that we all talk about it, is there's other people in the city that also can do this, not just myself. Our city staff leaders went to the Office of Emergency Management just this last week, on the 26th, before this even happened. And we actually sat down with the Office of Emergency Management. We sat in their Emergency Operations Center and asked them a lot of good questions. We were with them for a couple of hours. And so that's how intimate we are with what's happening with the state and the county level, and that'll continue. And it'll be messaged this way. So worst-case scenario, if you do have a question, please just consult the website, click on the current events, and if you have to, give me a call. I'll answer your phone call. Does anybody have a question for me? I know it's, I went overtime. Sorry, boss.
All good?
Have a great meeting.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We will continue on our agenda, and I need consent for the minutes.
And I have two corrections.
Two corrections.
Yes. Okay. On the first one, it was January 30th, and on page 5 of 5, on the first paragraph, it says, "Council agreed to go ahead with the loan." We agreed to go ahead with the loan application. So that's that one. And then the other one was on February 11th, and this is also on page 5 of 5. And at the very bottom, it talks about Counselor Rizley asked the Community Development Director Adams to give her an answer. He wasn't there. He had a very busy meeting, and I think he left already. So what I had asked is that this topic be put on the agenda for tonight. I see how it's way too busy tonight to be on there, but I would like to see it on the next council meeting agenda. So that's what I requested.
If I can just comment? I think both of those are accurate.
Yeah, we made the changes.
Yeah, okay. And I think you would recommend that the motion be amended.
Right. Okay, so I need an appropriate motion as amended for...
Move to approve the minutes of the January 30th council retreat, February 4th, regular meeting, and the February 11th work session with the amended notes by Counselor Rizley. I'm seconded.
Very good. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you. Now, we go into our public comment phase. Anybody out in the audience wish to have a voice and step up and tell us what for?
And I, too, know you're really busy, so I won't be like a drippy faucet overnight. I'll get through this really fast. I'm Ms. Colleen. I basically wanted to come tonight, even though you're so, the agenda was pretty overwhelming to look at, just to go over the fact that I know that one of the issues tonight is property. And in your envelopes are a number of, a lot of names that have signed, because just once again, I wanted to involve the city council about the feeling in the community about what you're about to continue to do and move forward on. And this is just a, I guess I would say, an emotional evaluation of, by a lot of names you'll recognize, and I think it's just important for all of us to remember how many people in this community are so anxious for this to keep plodding along and eventually have resolve where we can move forward. The other thing that's in the envelope is, I also wanted you to know that, and Nancy's aware of this, that if tomorrow I'm going to be speaking, and I have no idea if anybody would show up for this, but they may, about butts at the library. But it's amazing, some of the things that are happening, and I've left some information in your envelopes, that are happening not just within this state, but across this country. And I just thought, it's information you should start taking a look at, because I think this is a movement that will continue to go forward for all of us and in this community also. The other thing in there is, thank you, Jim, the Chamber and the Pantry are co-hosting something called, it's a homeless meeting, starting at 5:30 at the Chamber Community Office, or Build Room, rather, and it's Searching for Solutions, is knowing more about the homeless that are also right here in Cannon Beach. And I know a lot of times, we feel that we're immune from this, but it is part of our county. And one of the things I was very happy to say, the people that are speaking are also going to talk about the homeless and the coronavirus, because, you know, that's a whole different segment that the county's starting to look at. And so I think that that's something that will involve us. But we do know that homeless catch the bus right here in Cannon Beach at the end of the day and go up to a shelter. And who the homeless are, I was fairly, because I take a lot of clothing up there, I thought I knew who I was helping. I had no idea. These people really have shown me that when you say the word homeless, it's very broad. So I hope you consider attending. That's all I have to say, so I have a really long meeting, and I hope it's productive. And thanks for always letting me come and kind of drip, 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 and say things. So I appreciate all of you very much.
I need to ask, since you've sealed and named the envelopes, they're all contain the same thing, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And there's no anthrax, Sam, so it's okay.
No, I'm just, I was just wanting to make sure. Anybody else? No comments? Last chance. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on and start with our first ordinance, which is item number two. Jeff?
He's calling Bill.
Oh, he's calling Bill. We're connecting with Bill Kibaysen, our Land Dues attorney.
Hello, this is Bill Kibaysen.
Hey, Bill, this is Jeff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'll let Sam say something on the mic and just let me know if you don't hear him, okay?
Hi, Bill, how you doing?
Hi. Good evening.
Okay. We are about to start with our first consideration for ordinance. Jeff, do you want to introduce it?
Yes, this is, first off, I'd like to thank Colleen and the rest of the staff, because these are a lot of ordinances in one time, and you all for doing them all at one time. So anyhow, this is ordinance 2002, and it's the Amendment, Comprehensive Plan of Cannon Beach, Adopting Beach and Shoreline Dynamics in the Cannon Beach Litoral Cell, Implications for Dune Management, Special Paper 49, and that's Exhibit A. We referenced also the Oregon State reference numbers, because of course, these were entered back in 2018 to the state as zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan amendments. So in this first one, in the 2002, what we're doing is adopting the new sciences, it was referred to, the Allen Report, and that's with this one. Bruce, when, did you want to have Bill speak now, or is there a certain time?
We'd like for Bill Kibaysen to brief the council, let you know that probably four or five days ago, we got a call from someone that said that there was a lawsuit involving some houses from the Wayfair North that had to do with definition of foredune, some other things. And it was a municipal court case, and it was from '92, and we did not have a copy, so it took a while to get a copy. And we have analyzed it, because we were concerned that there might be some conflicts. And what we're doing now, based on, you know, what was, we were told was a lawsuit. Well, it wasn't a lawsuit. It was a code enforcement case. It was municipal court. And I'd like Bill to address that, because we have three things going on, and we'd like you to hear from him as far as what the potential impacts or lack of impacts are. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bruce. And let me, you know, I apologize for this coming in so late, because we did only get it recently. So, but I do want to talk about what happened back in 1992. And essentially, several residents of oceanfront residents removed, well, did some dune grading, and the city took a code enforcement action against them. And ultimately, the municipal court found there was no violation. And I'll talk specifically about why they found that violation, but I want to talk about the findings' impact for any permit requirements or code enforcement going forward. And essentially, this is somewhat similar to, you know, any other violation, whether it's speeding, or, you know, some property issue where you haven't removed weeds or what have you. There are several things to worry about. One, you know, is, when, if you were to do it again, have the facts changed? Has the law changed? Or was it a matter of not carrying the burden of proof? What this isn't, is an injunction or something where the court said, you know, that the city can no longer enforce its ordinance. That's not what happened. Instead, what the court found in that case was several things. There are two things that didn't play into the verdict, but were important. First, the court noted that in 1992, the city had not adopted a foredune management plan. We've done that now. We've had one in place since the late '90s, and you're in the process of adopting a new one. Second, the court noted that the city has not adopted any standards or policies regarding remedial grading. Again, that was something that the city had done. In fact, the court noted that there was only one foredune management plan in the entire state, and that was at Madonna Beach. And that has changed. There are several up and down the state. So, you know, it's a little more mature of a program than it was in 1992. But specifically, what happened was that these individuals were charged with violating the Code of Prohibition on the removal of sand. And so the first thing that the court did was then looked at who the particular defendants, Niedermeyer and Majowski, and said, well, they haven't really removed any sand. They moved it around the property. You know, what happened was that, over reports of a couple El Ninos, a significant sand accretion had occurred in front of their properties, which were south of the Wayfair. And what the court said is that, you know, for Niedermeyer and Majowski, they didn't remove any sand, because it was moved elsewhere on the property. And this proposed ordinance regulates foredune grading, not just sand removal. And so moving property, moving sand around the property is, would now be regulated in a way that it wasn't back then. Second, a different defendant was found not to violate the ordinance because the sand accumulation, which was significant, was not a foredune. And that was a factual determination that the court made based on the testimony of an expert for the property owner and the expert for the city. And what the court said is, based on that testimony, I don't believe this was a foredune, and so therefore, these regulations didn't apply. And so obviously, if in fact, the regulation is based on whether or not it is a foredune or not, then we would have to prove that it's a foredune. And the court specifically noted how the sand environment at the coast is dynamic, noted that it built up as a result of the El Ninos, and that it goes away. And that's still the case. And so, you know, where there isn't a foredune today, there might be one two years from now. So that would be part of the case we had to prove in 1992, and the same case we'd have to prove in 2020, if it depended on the foredune. And so, you know, I don't think that changes anything in what we do. Finally, the court concluded that a portion of one of the defendant's property was outside what was then called the Active Beach, and it's the active beach and dune area. And so what happened in 1993, apparently, a new map was created and better defined the zone line. So we want to make sure that the lines are clearly demarcated where the ocean management zone are, and I think we've got that. So, you know, what happened in 1992, you know, it's important, and I would imagine anytime we move to enforce or require a permit, we might hear something. But the critical thing is whether the ordinance that we have today actually regulates the management of the ocean front, the ocean management zone, in a way that we want it to. And I don't think this 1992 case affects that in any way. The question really is to focus on, does this regulate the way we want it to? And then, you know, we've got to enforce it in a way that is consistent with that. If it's required, if there are regulations on a foredune, we've got to prove it's a foredune. If it's limited to areas in a zone, we've got to show it's in a zone. And so that's my read of it. The '92 decision, while interesting, I don't think has a significant impact on what we do here, because the legal environment has changed, and, you know, to the extent there are changes in the factual circumstances, we've got to change that as well. So happy to talk about any of that further or answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Problem.
Bill, Bruce has wanted you to stay on through the foredune ordinances?
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, questions for staff on any part of this? Nope. Any public comment on this ordinance? No? Okay, a move for the discussion by council. Discussion?
It's appropriate, I've moved to approve the first reading of ordinance number 20-02.
Seconded.
Colleen?
Council President Benfield.
Yes.
Counselor Rizley.
Yes.
Counselor Opelby.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Mayor Stidham.
No. Motion passed, so we read the title?
Do you read it by title only, and then it goes to next month?
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Ordinance number 2002, for the purpose of amending the Comprehensive Plan of Cannon Beach and adopting beach and shoreline dynamics in the Cannon Beach Litoral Cell, implications for dune management, Special Paper 49, A.I. as an appendix. Okay, the ordinance has been approved, or the reading has been approved, and the second reading will be next month. Next item?
This is consideration of ordinance 20-03, for the purpose of amending Chapter 42, the Oceanfront Management Overlay Zone, and Chapter 80, Conditional Uses of Title 17, the Zoning of the Cannon Beach Municipal Code. That also is zoning 1801 and Comprehensive Plan 1801 of the Oregon State reference numbers. I did want to point out that I've had contact from some council that there is some technical changes on a couple of these ordinances, and so I want to just kind of read what those are. So on page three, there was some, the numbering's incorrect under A. It should be just one, two, and three, and four. And so we'll correct that, and that's, do you have any other questions?
Okay. Any questions for staff? Any public comment? No? Okay, go for a motion.
Move to approve the second reading and adopt ordinance number 20-02.
03.
So this would be...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this would be the first reading.
It's on the wrong page. Move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 20-03.
With the technical changes noted?
Yes, please.
Seconded.
Seconded. Colleen?
Counselor Rizley?
Yes.
Counselor Opelby?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stidham?
No. Okay. Reading has been approved. Ordinance 20-03, for the purpose of amending Chapter 4, Chapter 42, Oceanfront Management Overlay, OM Zone, and Chapter 80, Conditional Uses of Title 17, Zoning of the Cannon Beach Municipal Code. Reading has been approved, and motion, this will go on to next month. Next one. Jeff?
Okay. This is consideration of ordinance 2004, for the purpose of adopting City of Cannon Beach Foredune Management Plan, 2020, Exhibit A, as an appendix to the Cannon Beach Comprehensive Plan. This one... This one also was pointing out some technical changes, and I'll briefly run through those. On page eight, there's mention in the second paragraph of four-dune configurations in nearby management units. We, of course, took out the management unit concept with this. And so, it's to strike in, in management units and add a period at the end of nearby. And then, on page 25, at the end of the document, that's the old version of the preservation grading. I've updated to that to match the preservation grading in the zoning ordinance that you just approved. So, it now reads as that definition.
Okay. Any questions? Any public comment? Nope. And I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 20-04.
Second.
Uh, motion made, Colleen?
Councilor Opelby?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Councilor Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
No. Okay, uh, reading has been approved. So, ordinance 20-04, for the purpose of adopting City of Cannon Beach Four-Dune Management Plan, 2020, Exhibit A, as an appendix to the Cannon Beach Comprehensive Plan. That moves on to next month for adoption. Next one. Item five. Jeff?
Sure. This is consideration of ordinance 2006, for the purpose of amending Chapter 4, Building Codes of Title 15, Buildings of the Cannon Beach Municipal Code. And there's no technical changes on this one. Mainly, this is just an update of the building code, moving some of the responsibilities that have been transferred over to the police department in that, and then updating it to refer to the appropriate documents that the state refers to with the Oregon State Building Code update.
Yep.
Jeff, I was wondering, there really isn't any definition of building official or building inspector. And sometimes they're used interchangeably and sometimes not. And so, I was wondering if at the beginning of your descriptions, that you might clarify what that is? Because I think, oh, you're the planning person. That's the official who goes and checks the, to inspect things. And I, I got a little confused reading this.
And on that note, I'm sure that this, when this was written, or I'm assumed it was written or taken from another jurisdiction that, where those duties could fall to more than one person, whereas we have just one person doing the inspection and the official. And then, throw on top of that the community development director, which is me, who, this person works for me. And so, yeah, if you need a, or if you'd like a clear definition on that, we can definitely?
Well, it was kind of like, who has the authority?
Yeah, we can do that. I have asked at least for the 2007 ordinance, the next one, but could also with this one as well, is to be read twice. And so, I'm happy to go make those changes and put that in your next packet for your consideration with the?
Yeah, I don't know when this was done, do you, before?
The original one?
97.
Yeah, 97, is that, yeah.
It looks like it was submitted nicely. Do we need to simplify the bill, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks.
Oh, those are good suggestions that Robbins makes. I had the confusion too, as to who's who.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Any public comment? No? Okay, then I'll look for a motion.
So, can I, just procedurally, what Jeff is suggesting, that even if it's unanimous tonight, that we do the second reading at the April meeting? Just to be clear about that.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that okay?
I move to adopt ordinance 20-06, for the purpose of amending Chapter 4, Building Codes of Title 15, Buildings of the Cannon Beach Municipal Code. And I just would note that, to add the changes that Councilor Rizley has brought up, and we'd bring it up again next month. Is that sufficient, Ashley?
Yes.
Seconded, Colleen?
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Councilor Rizley?
Yes.
Councilor Opelby?
Yes.
Mayor Stidl?
Yes. But we will move this on to next month also.
Do you want to do that? Could you just read it by title only?
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Get it out of the way?
I forgot, sorry. Ordinance 206, for the purpose of amending Chapter 4, Building Codes of Title 15, Buildings of the City of Cannon Beach Municipal Code. Okay, next item is item six. Jeff?
Okay, this is consideration of zoning, I mean, ordinance 2007, for the purpose of revising establishing fees related to building permits, land use planning, and conversion to Oregon Building Codes, E-permitting Program for Cannon Beach. I have some technical changes with this. And like I said, we presented that letter to the state stating on what, the timeframe that we wanted to do this. We wanted to allow at least two meetings for public hearing, as, public comments as well. And so, that's why I've asked for, at least for this one, but both to consider doing that, and I appreciate that. I will note that on page two of the actual ordinance, it's, we've changed that to number 15, the land use planning review. Throughout this whole process, we've been in touch with the state building office and with E-permitting. And they've won, they've wanted us to move that fee into the Exhibit B instead of Exhibit A, under the land use fees. And we did that and updated Exhibit A and B. And so, we'll put those changes into your next month's packet. But I also wanted to say, Sam had asked me also to look at kind of the change in the rate structures and percentage of fees. So, I'm going to pass this document around. It's something that I didn't get in time, unfortunately, for the packets. But I knew we had another month to talk about this. And so, if you guys have questions either this month about it or over the month, let me know. But as you get that, what I've done is I broke out, this is for our residential, one and two-family structural fee, and a comparison of the old with the new, the difference in adopted amount, the difference of the change, percentage of the change per each one of those categories going up per rate. And then, how much of that total building fee percentage is that being? And Sam, so you had voiced the concern about the smaller permits. Are they getting deemed too much? This is a way, at least, I wanted to show, there is a progression kind of from the smaller to the, but if you look at the actual kind of amounts and differences, this may be able to break that out for you, and you can kind of, you know, I don't expect you to, just tonight, to be able to kind of, you know, you know, stomach it or look at it and see how it fits. But if you have questions, we, we've got a month to kind of talk about. If we want the fee structure to be any different, we can always do that at that next.
When I read this, it appeared that you were just adjusting the rates to what the states?
Yes.
All around the state is doing.
What we, what we're, what we've tried to do is match best as possible, kind of our, Klatseb County is our main, kind of the guide of what we modeled it on, because they're the most recent. But we've tried to match it. We've asked for comparisons with, like you said, other jurisdictions that are comparable. And we've tried to even out as much as we could. We do a lot more, of course, one and two-bedroom residential. And so, our rates are a little higher on that end than some of the others. But that's just because we have to kind of make up for the lack of any kind of commercial. And a lot of these areas that we compare in, say, median home prices and things like that, they have a lot more commercial development. So, that's how we've kind of balanced out the thing. So, I'm happy to answer more questions about that or look into other things more, just let me know.
Well, one thing I was wondering about, since you're looking in our community area, is Seaside has just increased their short-term rental fees to quite a bit. And right here, it's looking like our fees are quite low.
Yeah.
In comparison. So, if you're, I don't know what Mancunita's doing, but?
Yeah.
I've read in the paper about some of the people that are upset in Seaside now.
Yeah, I'm happy to, Robin, if you'd like me to bring back all of those kind of, if you're looking specifically at short-term rental, bring back those as kind of a sheet, and you can look at that and see what you all think for the next packet, or put that in the next packet.
It could look like a really great place to get a rental, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, one other question I had?
Before you go, before you move on, I got something I want to add to that part. On Exhibit B, where Mark Robbins is talking about, shows administrative, the short-term rental permits. And I don't know if that's supposed to be a heading, but there's no, no charge at all.
Right.
And then, there's only renewal fees. There's not an initial fee. So?
So, that's?
And I think, you know, there are fees for the permits.
Yeah, yeah, okay, let me look at that, okay?
And I think Seaside is $400.
Yeah, I thought it was $450.
Mancunita's kind of go, wait, Mancunita's going to be much harder, so we need to look at that.
So, I'll look at all those.
Okay.
And then, one other question I had is, I don't see a business license fee. Is, does that fit in with any of them?
No, that's under the Finance Department, but it's a good point. You know, I've worked in many jurisdictions where each year, the first meeting of the year, they adopt the new schedule, fee schedules for all their fees. And I recommend that, if you guys are looking at, at say, a new model to go to, that is a great way to kind of keep a, an update on this as you move forward. And because some of them, like you said, fall in different departments. And so, like these land use, I haven't really, I didn't update any really of the land use fees. And so, you know, we, they updated those fairly recently, and so, I didn't really feel we needed, when I compared to the ones that we had on that one chart that Gearhart did, I didn't see too egregious. I mean, you look at some like Lake Oswego and some of those, I mean, they're really jacking up some prices. But I just didn't see that, that's, it didn't really fit our model right now. But I'm happy to look in our, in other areas as well, so.
Brandon?
Jeff, I just want to make sure I'm reading the sheet you passed out correctly. So, on the percentage of permits, for each one of those values, is that currently the amount?
Yeah.
That each one of these permits represents?
Yeah.
In our totality of all permits issued?
So, oh, okay, so, this is just for, if somebody wanted to come in and do a project, and the building permit came to, you know, a 25, a $2,250 project, you know, this is how much the, they're going to be charged for the building fee. That's our minimum fee permit, is you've got to pay $6,150. Now, we're going to be asking for $106. I think, are you asking, Brandon, where Sam had asked at the last meeting to, he had said, how does, how many do we have in each one of these kind of?
I believe that was me that did that.
Okay, yeah. So, I'm, I do, I did do one year's worth of the data on that. What I'm going to do in your next packet, when I include this, is do the three-year study of where these fall. So, you'll have the analysis of that.
Great.
I'm glad you brought that up, yep.
The, again, referring to the paper you just passed out, the percent of change is what I was really curious about. I'm glad this work, this is really nicely laid out. But it shows to me that there is an odd equity there, or there is lacking in equity. $9,800 project is only a 9.12% increase, whereas a 25, 2250 project is a 72.36% increase. That just seems odd if we're, I don't understand why there was these weird jumps.
Well, we were trying to keep it in a progression. And, you know, when you're entering these, you know, I, we looked at it from everything, from a flat kind of thing to other, and you're trying to capture the progression. And the reason is because you look at that jump in the old from 61 up to one, the up to 147 really, you know, quickly after. And that's where we kind of get this kind of anomaly. What, what I can do though, and what, next month, when we bring up the packet, we'll have, how many did we have in each one of these classification errors? So, you can see, would it really impact that much in this area? And if not, like you said, if we are really concerned about these, and this doesn't seem like a fair progression, and it's docking those, like you said, those first five categories, where? Let's, let's look at those, and we can easily isolate. But if it's only, if we've only done two or three of those, or, you know, this year, is it really, you know, should we just go ahead and keep this model that it is? It's a, it would be up to you guys to kind of look at that data and make that change.
This, this, one little aspect of this, and I understand that the old numbers were probably just all over the place. And so, that's skewing the differences. But what I'm thinking is that if the less, lesser amount projects are the ones that are repairing older buildings?
Yeah.
And fixing things up, compared to the higher, you know, $500,000 project, which is the brand-new McMansion that's coming in, as a city council policy, I would rather the repair.
Yeah.
So, I would almost, you know, tweak it a little bit so that there's a little more pressure on the higher end.
So, what I could do is take that, say, from your numbers around the 15,000 mark, where it starts kind of projecting up in a larger, to bring those numbers, curve those down some, just to, to give you a kind of a second scenario, and look at when we bring back per category of how that plays out, with maybe a yearly estimate of how much fees we'll be bringing in and all those kind of things. Okay? Okay?
Sam, to your point, I think what a lot of those permits and those values are probably mechanical permits.
It could be too.
So, you know?
Yeah.
It's all construction, but?
Yeah.
It's not necessarily somebody working on their home that's affected it. It'd be plumbers and heating contractors and people like that.
Yeah, that's possible.
Exactly what I was going to comment on.
Thanks, Jeff, and I'm, my concern right at, my personal concern right at the moment is I'm not comfortable with going ahead with reading the ordinance until we see some of these changes.
Yeah.
So, why don't we, I'll ask the council, why don't we postpone this one until next month? We could see the new stuff clearer, and then read it both times if it's unanimous then.
Is there any kind of an emergency with the state? I know you're raising these fees to, for the permitting?
If we keep on this schedule, just like you said, and do it in this manner, we're fine. You know, if at the next one, you're still asking questions and stuff, we may need to hold a special meeting or something to, to get that done. But I think we're? need to hold a special meeting or something to get that done. But I think we're fine if we keep on this. I will get, I'll try to do this, all of this, next week, and maybe get that two-year early so that you give a feeling if you're comfortable with those kind of scenarios or numbers. And then, we, if we need to start scheduling a special hearing for a second, when we could do that.
Okay, that works. Everybody okay with that?
I am.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to something else.
Seven.
Seven, thank you. This is Bruce, or Karen.
What we have before you tonight is consideration of Ordinance 20-08 for the purpose of revising Chapter 2.36 of Parks and Community Services Committee. At the February 11th Court Session, Council reviewed the documents necessary to make the 12 Days of Earth a city event. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance, which will make the 12 Days of Earth a city event.
Any questions?
Sure.
No questions? Any public comment from public? No? Okay. I need a motion then.
Move to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 20-08.
I second it.
Motion seconded. Colleen?
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Councilor Rizley?
Yes.
Councilor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Ordinance 2008 for the purpose of revising Chapter 2.36, Parks and Community Services Committee. So I need another motion.
Move to approve the second reading and adopt Ordinance Number 20-08.
Second.
Colleen?
Councilor Rizley?
Yes.
Councilor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Ordinance 202008 for the purpose of revising Chapter 2.36, Parks and Community Services Committee. Ordinance 2008 has been adopted. You got one work. For those who are curious, we have hashed out a new system for ordinances than what we used to do. We're now a little more legal than we used to be, so.
We were legal.
We were legal, but it's just.
We were pretty legal.
Hopefully, this will become very clear and understandable later. I'm getting used to it, so bear with us. At that, we will go on to our next item, which is a simple resolution. Karen?
The staff report is consideration of Resolution 20-03 for the purpose of delegating authority to the Parks and Community Services Committee to implement the 12 Days of Earth celebration on behalf of the city. At the February 11th Court Session, Council reviewed the necessary documents to make the 12 Days of Earth a city event, and based on your feedback revision made to the criteria listed under the Street Fair Booths section, staff recommends adoption of the resolution, which will make 12 Days of Earth a city event.
Cool. Any discussion?
Is this where I talk about the manual?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple of things, being the editor that I am. When you have the 12, this is just a stupid, stupid thing for me, but the way that it's written says 12-dash Days of Earth Day. It should be just 12 without the dash.
Okay.
And then the other question I have is, under booths, it says, all booths, this is on page, it's like four, all booths receive the same amount of space, approximately 10 by 10, but it doesn't say whether it's 10 feet by 10 feet, or what it is. 10 square feet or whatever. Okay, I'm happy now.
One thing I noticed under events is Hands Across the Sand was not mentioned as one of the events. And I think we did, must each and every one itemize, but we can add that. It's still in existence, I hope.
Yes.
Okay. Because that's a wonderful thing. And there sure are a lot of liaisons. Okay, and then on page six, parade participants, it's walking only, but is that taken into consideration ADA? Page six, it's the second paragraph, the parade's walking, no motorized vehicles are allowed, but I was thinking in some case wheelchairs have been in store.
There would be an exception made. So I think by motorized vehicles, what we mean is motorcycles, cars.
Would it be easier just to scratch walking and just say, no motorized vehicles?
Some wheelchairs have motorized.
Yeah.
We've also had.
Yeah, some wheelchairs.
We've also, we've also had bicycles.
Yeah.
So.
That's not motorized, so unless they're electric.
It could be. I mean, there are motorized bicycles nowadays.
I'm sorry, it's not walking, yeah. Okay. So we could revise that, or we could take it back to the committee, or you guys could vote on amendment. Again, that's a policy call, whether or not you guys want to include bicycles or just just walking. I think, I think the point is that we don't want motorized vehicles, such as cars and golf carts, so we could specify that, that no motorized vehicles, or no non-ADA motorized vehicles are allowed.
That'd be good. My preference would be that you make an amendment and get this done tonight. Yeah.
Okay. So if that's, if there's no other comments, I would ask for just a vote on that amendment, and then a vote on the resolution.
Well, then I do have one other question. I think at our last meeting, it was agreed that the tables would be provided by the city. But if you read the handbook, it doesn't say that. And so I wanted to make sure that if the city did set up all of them, which would really save the chaos, which is going to happen when you load and unload and set up and tear down, to have the city just do that all in one fell swoop.
Okay.
I think would really make a difference. And at last meeting, we agreed to that, but that's not what it says here.
Committee and us talked about it after the meeting last month, and we will continue to provide the tables. And what the committee agreed to was that they would, as they make their invites to the participants, that they would encourage them to bring whatever supplies they needed. If the people needed a table, then obviously we'd provide it as we have been. I think we didn't put it in the document in the event that this gets to a much larger event. It would corner the city into having to go rent tables, or find a way to provide tables as this event got larger, and we opted not to go that route. I don't think it's going to be a problem, Robin. We can look at it again if it gets large enough where we run out of tables, and see where we are at that point. But I think we're a ways from getting to that point.
Okay, but if you read a handbook, then it doesn't say that. I guess I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, the committee, the committee is going to support that, and the city's agreed to support that as the committee makes the invites.
And then one correction on the form. It says, describe signage. Couldn't you say, scan a picture of signage?
I'm sorry.
For approval. It's on the form.
Yes.
Or form, I'm sorry. Yeah.
How about describe or provide? So, yeah, we could say describe or provide all signage.
Yeah, because I think now people describing it could take.
Okay, from that, it sounds like I need a motion first on the no walking, and however we want to word that.
So for this, it's a resolution. My suggestion is that we just make an amendment, or we make a motion for all of the amendments here, and that staff will, will make the amendments.
Okay.
So I think one motion is fine, to amend the handbook and application or invitation.
Okay.
I move to adopt the Resolution 20-03 for the purpose of delegating authority to the Parks and Community Services Committee to implement the 12 Days of Earth celebration on behalf of the city, and incorporating the corrections and changes discussed tonight.
That works.
Second.
Seconded. Any other comments? Colleen?
Councilor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Councilor Rizley?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Resolution passes? Go do it, Barb. Okay.
Why is she just sitting?
Jump in the heck. Okay, next item. And after this item, we're going to take a short break. So, because everybody's moving around all of a sudden. Okay. Consideration for purpose of supporting the Board of Clatsop County's Commissioners' Ordinance, the County Retail Sales of Tobacco Product Licensing. We had the gentleman last meeting did our presentation for us. Any questions? Any presentation anybody want to make? Okay, I need a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-04 in support of Clatsop County Ordinance 2019-03 regarding tobacco product retail licensing.
Seconded. Any questions? Colleen?
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Councilor Rizley?
Yes.
Councilor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Okay, at that, a short break, five minutes. Purpose of making a budget adjustment from the RV park? No, hang on. Approving and authorizing interfund capital loan. Bruce?
Ms. Wallace, our financial director, Laurie Sari, to handle this.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Okay, so we all know that the purchase of our Cannon Beach Elementary School is in the works right now, and I know Bruce is going to discuss that later. I'm here to kind of talk about the funding. So we know the purchase price is $400,000 plus closing costs. And we've identified funding from the County Transient Room Tax Fund. There's money there available to pay for the school, roughly $299,708. So we were left with, looking for some other funding sources in the city through an interfund loan. I believe we discussed that in one of the prior council meetings. And we identified the Tourism and Arts Fund, where we could, they have money available. The funding gap is $102,000. And so I've written up a resolution here to facilitate a loan for $102,000 if council wishes to do that. It's a three-year term at 0% interest rate, paid over three years, yes. And we will then schedule the debt service payments in subsequent years through the budget process. And so if that's amenable to council, it would just require adopting the attached resolution.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Bruce?
Ms. Mayor, we did send a notice to the TAC committee. I did have a conversation a few moments ago with the chair of that committee, and she indicated it would be very supportive. In fact, they've offered something like this at an earlier date, when we were earlier in the process.
I'd say I'm just.
Brandon?
Are we locked into the three years, or can we pay it all at once?
There is no prepayment penalty.
Just by making this resolution, by making the resolution, we don't, there's no time?
No.
It will be paid over the three years, or you could pay it off earlier if you wish to.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move that we, the council, adopt Resolution Number 20, 2005 for the purpose of approving and authorizing an interfund capital loan to the Clatsop County Transient Room Tax Fund.
Whoa, double second.
Double second.
Robin gets it. Colleen?
Council President Benfield?
Yes.
Councilor Rizley?
Yes.
Councilor Ogilvy?
Yes.
Councilor McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Okay, thanks, Laurie.
You're welcome. I have another item coming up.
Don't go anywhere.
Consideration for the RV park. Go ahead.
Okay, so we've been meeting with the RV park management team at Escape Lodging, discussing future projects that we think should be budgeted in the next year. Some of those projects, during our discussions, Bruce, Karen, and I met with them, BJ, Michelle, Becky, Sean, we all sat down and kind of went over things, and it really became evident after our discussions that there were two projects that we felt really were kind of urgent and should try to be accomplished prior to June 30, 2020. And so those projects are not in our current budget. One of the projects is the fuel station equipment. It is failing, and at one of our meetings, the unleaded fuel was not working. BJ is here tonight, BJ Quick, so if you had some technical questions about the fuel station and the other project is the pool room. It needs to be, there needs an air quality system to be installed to mitigate the moisture problem, to keep the infrastructure from molding, or whatever happens to that. So we are recommending to council tonight, you'll see that the cost of those two projects on my staff report, the gas station is $60,000, and the pool room is $15,000, for a total of $75,000. BJ assures us that they can be completed by June 30, so we'll stay away from the busy summer season. And the gas station is very important to the city, is a fuel source, so I think that makes it even more critical. But if you have questions, BJ, this resolution will make the transfer. We're using contingency, which is available there. It's just a matter of moving it up into the line of capital outlay, and then we can proceed, if that is your wish.
Mr. Mayor?
Great.
If I can, just a couple points. One, it's not mold, it's milded. So I want to make sure that that is totally clear. The other thing is, in looking at this, we tried to see whether or not these could be deferred until after July 1st, and there was an option to replace what was going on inside the house there, keep the pumps running, but whatever money we spent when we replaced the pumps, this would no longer work for it, and the reliability is just not there. So it's an expense we would have recommended next year, and so we're saying, let's go ahead and move forward with this. And they have done some work in the pool facility, but the, their. And they have done some work in the pool facility, but the, their air system is just not keeping it dry enough, and so, that's just a protection of our investment.
BJ, are the, are these totally new pumps, or just a repair?
Totally new pumps.
Okay.
Kind of looks like this.
I don't think you can get parts for these except on Amazon.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like, right?
Yeah, yeah. And that's what they've been trying to make work.
They are new pumps.
Okay.
What kind of gas? I mean, you have, are you going to have mid-grade?
We're going to have good gas.
Yes.
Yes. It will have diesel, it'll have unleaded, it'll have premium, basically what we have currently now. So, what we have now is we have 80's vintage system, both internal and external. Obviously, you know you can't go to that pump station and use your credit card or a debit card, very big inconvenience for the public, travelers, guests alike, so even for the police department, they cannot pump gas after 8:00 PM there. So, with this new system, you'll be able to use debit cards, credit cards, it'll be just like going to Stop and Go or anywhere else, anywhere after 8:00, you can do self-serve. So, any guests that's traveling 101 will now have the access to be able to pull off the road, fill up, and keep going, or stay at the RV park, or come into town.
So, if you run out of power, is there a generator?
We, the city does have generators that we can actually bring over to site, especially in case of emergency, power outage. As of right now, we can still do that, but the problem is, is the internal equipment inside the lobby area, again, 80's vintage, so trying to find those parts now is getting harder and harder to come by. Just as we had our last meeting, the unleaded fuel station went down because of one of those parts. So, the module inside the unit, inside the building, is antiquated. It's a punch dial system, so when that goes out, we're looking at Amazon for parts at this point. Dover, all these major companies mascot, they don't make these parts readily available anymore, because they just, they're equated. So, they just, they're hard to come by, let's put it that way. So, when we have a problem, it's really kind of holding our breath, is it going to work after they make this repair at this point, so.
Did I understand your question to be what grades?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to have diesel, 87?
We will have premium, regular unleaded, diesel. It's two separate.
So, no mid-grade? Okay.
Correct. And it'll be two actual stations, just like what you have now, but it'll actually be two modules, and I believe you guys have the paperwork representing the actual visual of that equipment. It's obviously very safe for internet penetration, all those kind of things. If you want to get into all those technical questions, we can get Rusty over and him and I can go through all those things. But it does give us an ability that the city does not have now. Obviously, the single station in town, again, an emergency situation, nobody has access to gas, and the city is losing out large amounts of revenue when these pumps go down, because travelers just obviously can't get gas in those, and so they keep on going, or they run out of gas, and we're calling Gary's to try to tow them out of the parking lot, so.
And these, the gas that's there is ours, it's the city's, and it's part of our emergency management plan, and to be able to go ahead and establish power for those easily, but that's part of our emergency supply, whatever's available.
Correct. And also, just to let council know, the, we've run some numbers on this, obviously, and the ROI return on investment on this is roughly about three years. So, it's not like a long extended protracted. What we anticipate, between an 80 to 100 gallon difference per day, we think is going to pay for it about three years. So, I've already got confirmation from Chief Sherman Horn that after 8:00, they use, obviously, you know, they fill up when they get to 3/4 of a tank, so that's 20 to 40 gallons per day right there, just from the police department, not to mention the city, if they're doing anything after hours, they have to go somewhere, either to Pacific Pride, I know that's where the police station fills up, or anybody else for that matter. So, the return on investment, it's good business for the city to do, so.
Great.
What's the nature of the upgrades on the pool room?
What we have going on in the pool room, again, old building, when Steve Martin built that building back in the old days, they didn't have the technology that they have now. And so, what we have going on now is we just have an extraction fan essentially that pulls the condensation and moisture out of those pool areas. And so, what happens is, obviously, the city invested in a brand-new roof system when it blew off several years ago. It's a car decking system. And so, what happens, especially in the wintertime, because it's so cold outside, there's no heating system in the pool area. And so, when all that condensation, because our pool and the spa, pool typically 82 degrees and 84 degrees, and so that dew point gets to a certain point, and there's no way for that dew to go anywhere other than up. And so, again, we get that mildew, not mold, up on the ceiling. But what that's doing ultimately is it's causing an asset issue. At some point in time, that will become a rot issue if it's not taken care of. So, we have a plan in place that we've used in some of our other hotels. It's the most cost-effective way to address this problem. That's basically coming in, we put an HVAC system for heat, run by gas, we put it in the pool room, it actually dissipates heat for that zone space. We pull in fresh air from outside, it stabilizes the air temperature, and then we eject it back out the building. It's the most efficient way to do it for the 15,000. If you actually go with a pool pack system that you see in a standard hotel, you're going to be 70, $80,000 for that kind of system to actually take that moisture out of the room and do the same thing. So, we vetted this process on several properties. I've been personally on two of them that have worked. It's a great system for the money. So, again, it works both winter and summertime, because it's all regulated by a module that sits on the wall and checks that temperature, just like your home. So, when that senses a certain moisture point, it'll actually kick on that system. It starts working. When it doesn't sense the moisture, it shuts itself off.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at that, we need a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-06 for the purpose of approving increases and decreases to the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget by making an intrafund transfer of appropriations in the RV park fund.
Second?
Last question? Colleen?
Counsel Rissley?
Yes.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy? Yes.
Counsel President Dennyfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie.
Proceed.
I think I have another item.
You have another one?
She, she is on her roll.
What is this one? Okay.
We have to remove Mark Barnes.
Go ahead.
This is the last one. This is just pretty much a housekeeping item, a little over a year or so ago. We probably should have addressed this, but we didn't, and I was reviewing my banking documents the other week or so and realized that we needed to remove a prior staff person from our signature cards, and so, we were doing that tonight. So, we have, Bruce has recommended that we add Colleen Dick, our assistant city manager, city recorder, as a signer, and removing the prior staff person.
Perfect.
And that's what this will facilitate with the attached resolution, and then we can get the bank cards over to Columbia Bank.
And Laurie, this would only impact items in which we walk into the bank and come in and show them our ID, as far as the signature cards?
What do you mean?
My understanding is this doesn't have anything to do with electronic transfers. It has to do with signatures?
Yeah, if we needed a hard signature on something.
Yes, that's what this is for.
Yes. Right now, Bruce and I sign everything, and these are kind of like backup signers.
Oddly enough.
We have Jason and Colleen.
Done several of these. So, yep. Okay.
I have a question on the form itself. Colleen Dick, the title is secretary.
That's just the bank forms.
That's what I want to know, is bank form, or, because that's not her actual title here, everybody else has their actual title.
Oh, here. Yeah, we can get that changed. We can get that changed.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't realize that they had put that there.
Good catch.
Yeah, read some of this stuff.
I'm impressed.
Okay, then, we need a motion.
He just made that up. I didn't tell them that. Okay, Colleen?
Move to adopt Resolution 20-07, removing Mark Barnes and adding Colleen Dick as signatory on the operating and RV park accounts at Columbia Bank.
Seconded. Colleen?
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel President Dennyfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rissley?
Yes.
Counsel Stile?
Yes. Okay, Laurie, you can go away now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
That was fun. Next item. Oh, Tourism and Arts Commission appointment. We have, I have a note here that Sue has withdrawn her application, so we only have one person up for renew. So, we don't really need to vote, we can just do this by a claim. Does anybody disagree with Steve?
There is a reason why we wouldn't have a vote.
Yeah.
No.
Already marked valid.
Oh, I'm sorry, they have ballots. Yes, that's fine. So, yes, you can do it by, you can do it any way you'd like at this point.
I know. That one. So, if the council wishes, somebody could make a motion to approve Steve Sinclair for the renewal.
So moved.
Second?
Okay. Seconded. Colleen?
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel President Dennyfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rissley?
Yes.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Does that serve to fill the, a motion to appoint, or?
That is the motion.
Okay. There we go. Okay. Bruce, contract with the school district.
Yes, sir. On February 24th, the city, at your direction, delivered a signed copy of the agreement for the purchase of the Cannon Beach Elementary School property. We also delivered earnest, check for earnest money in the sum of $50,000. That same day, the school board responded and gave us a fully executed contract. What we're looking for is a sense of your affirmation with the action that was taken by staff on that day. Want to point out that the primary purpose for the acquisition are for uses that will enhance and promote significant attraction and cultural and archaeological interest, and providing meeting space for hospitality operations, and so, we think it's appropriate to consider that the primary funding source would be TRT funds. And you made a transfer tonight to make sure that we have enough in the appropriate account to purchase the property. I will tell you that we are getting prices now for environmental site assessment and building surveys, and so we will be coming back to you for funding on that once we know what the costs are going to be, because that was not budgeted.
Okay.
That is not included in this price.
Right. Are there any?
Any investigations done early about that?
We have the previous investigations.
Yeah.
But we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing it based on what our needs might be, but we will clearly be using the information that had been generated previously.
So, these were done by someone else at another time, or were they ones that we paid for initially?
We didn't.
Well, I don't know. I know, I think that this was stuff that.
We did one, and the school district didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's a matter of just having an inspector come back and update there, not a full-blown new?
Probably.
We need to look at what was done and then get the level that we feel comfortable with and move forward.
My impression, although I wasn't on the council at the time, my impression was it was a fairly cursory examination. It wasn't as in-depth as what we probably want to do now.
Yeah, the same thing with the building survey, what, you know, what I looked at was just, you know, an estimate to fix some things as opposed to a, you know, there's this issue, this issue here, so I'm thinking that there will be more in-depth investigation. I think that it'll, I considered it an investment, because when we finally get to moving forward with things, we'll be quite a bit ahead as far as what the conditions are.
Sure.
What would you like from the council tonight, Bruce?
First of all, to affirm this particular, the action that was taken by staff on February 24th, and the next thing is kind of related to it. In discussions that we've had, we talked about, you know, the importance of maintaining the presence of the food pantry and make sure that in the transition that that is taken care of. So, a second thing I'm asking for is direction, if you still feel that way, for direction to negotiate a contract for their continued presence. There's already a contract that they have with the school board. I feel that most of the terms are totally appropriate for what we're looking at, but I think it might be important for the operation and the clients to know that that function is going to stay there if that's our intent.
It seems like you can do it by consensus, but I, maybe you recommend that we just make a motion, and I'd make a motion to confirm and validate the actions taken by staff, Bruce St. Dennis in particular, to secure a contract for the purchase of the elementary school property, and further to authorize city manager to move forward with due diligence process leading up to closing. I would add that we should approve negotiating a new lease with the food pantry.
Second?
Go ahead, Nancy.
Nope. How does that, that's a, about food pantry?
To negotiate?
Negotiate?
Negotiate a new lease with the food pantry.
I don't know why.
Okay, you got the second? Okay.
Hey, Counsel President Dennyfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rissley?
Yes.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Our next item, consideration of the city manager evaluation. We had executive session prior to this, and we went through the final step of our evaluation.
I will take this, City Attorney Ashley Driscoll. So, this is Bruce's review for 2019. Just to sum up the process to date, the city council met in executive session the first week in January, evaluated Bruce under the 12, 11 or 12 criteria that we had previously agreed upon. We met again the first week in February and continued the evaluation process. Then the council met with Bruce in executive session this evening to review the results of that evaluation. So, the council action is two-part tonight. The first would be to, I'm going to presume, an approval of the evaluation, so a motion to approve the evaluation, and then, second, if the council so desires, a discussion about any merit increase for Bruce dating back to December 2019. So, all discussions about salary have to be in open session, so that's the second part of tonight's discussion.
Okay, at that, I will move to approve a positive performance evaluation for the city manager, Bruce St. Dennis. Any discussion after two hours? Colleen?
Counsel President Dennyfield?
Yes.
Counsel Rissley?
Yes.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes.
So, the second part of the discussion is any merit increase dating back to December
I would move to grant Bruce St. I would move to grant Bruce St. Dennis a merit increase of 5% based on his performance review.
Can I make a comment?
We can have discussion.
Second? We'll have a second.
Seconded?
Is it seconded?
Okay. I'm just.
I am very happy to hear that there is going to be an HR person involved in the future here, and that is why I am convinced that this was a good evaluation.
I'll also make a comment, just to bring up the fact that the evaluation went through a lot of topics. Like Ashley said, there was 12 points in the evaluation, but there was more discussion and interest in how the city is run and how we interact with the staff through Bruce. So it was a very positive assessment, I thought.
Yeah, we had, I thought, a very interesting discussion just with council in evaluating the various, we're 12, now 11 points, and reached consensus on those evaluations. And then met with Bruce, and he responded to each of the points in a very positive way, and I thought, very informative way. So I'm very pleased with the process. And anyway, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, and I thought it was a good process also, and I think it's in good direction as we come out of it. I think there's some good ideas. And I appreciate working with all of you, and appreciate working for all of you, for your benefits.
Okay. We have a motion? Did we vote on it?
No.
Yes.
We haven't voted on it, but.
Please.
Counsel Rissley?
I do.
Counsel Ogilvy?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Council President Penfield?
Yes.
Mayor Stile?
Yes. Okay. Almost out of voice here, but last items.
Could I actually, before we move on, is there anything that you guys would like to see different about the process next year, just while I'm here?
No, I thought this one went well.
Okay.
Ashley. Page numbers.
Page numbers? On what?
On the document, just, we were.
Oh, yes, page.
Okay.
Not only page numbers, but numbers for each.
Numbers for each item? Okay. More numbers. I'll write that down.
Thank you, Ashley.
Easy to reference, yeah.
You're a big, big, big help.
Consideration for authorizing a mayor to sign water resiliency loan application document. Bruce?
Yes, sir. This process is moving forward a little bit quickly, because there is a deadline for us to change the terms of our previous application. We did do an application for, I believe it was two, two and a half million dollars for line projects. That was before we looked at some of the results, or before we considered the results of the water resiliency portion of the master plan. And so we did talk to, I believe it's Oregon, Business Oregon, and Health Department, too, I think is somehow involved. And you recall, we did get a loan from them already. It was for the meter module. It was for $624,000. And they evaluate every application for affordability, all those kind of things, impact on rates. And in that case, in our initial application, there was a $322,000 principal forgiveness aspect. And there was $322,000 that we will be repaying for $624,000 loan. That is over 20 years at 1%. What the intent is, and we've had some discussions about this, is as we're developing the plan, and there's, there are some numbers that you're going to be seeing next week when we talk more about the water resiliency side. But if you look at the things that are going to be included, there's going to be some repairs, replacement of, main reservoir is under consideration, water treatment plant operations, seismic valves, so that if an event occurs, the line closes so that we don't lose the water that's in the tanks. There's a number of things. And those come out to about $12.9 million. I know my number was lower. We've added another project in this, which is the main transmission line. The original mission that we set up for was to fix everything going from the springs down to the treatment plant, up to the tank, and then down to the RV park. What we've done is added an element in here that would make the lines that serve going down to the Tolavana Tank, I was, HDP, is what it's called? Yeah, but it's a pipe that is flexible, the valves are, the joints are flexible, much more likely to deal with seismic event. Also.
As we did on Ashtray.
Yeah. But also, if you look at our map for water, the other side, you know, going across the creek, there is a line that goes, you know, kind of goes through the rest of the city, carries water to everybody, and then there's a line that is underneath ground, underneath First Street Bridge, and comes up. And then that is the line that would potentially fill the north tank, that sort of thing. From a resiliency standpoint, that puts the north end in a different situation than what the rest of the city is, if we're able to get water to the Tolavana Tank. So this also includes a new line that would go down 101, and then in another direction to the north tank, and it also would be HDP. And so where now, if there's any break in any of the lines go long through the city, that the water supply that would go across First Street Bridge is not, is reliable. This is a line that would be dedicated to get or sell, get water, a constant source over across to the other side of the creek. So those are some of the things that we're talking about. So essentially, we said, let's deal with the water supply resiliency, but we're also saying, let's also take care of the transmission capability. And the reason for trying to go for a larger number is that, right now, we're hoping that the terms will be similar to what we got with the meter modules, which would mean that this almost $14 million would come in something less than $7 million. We would get a loan for seven, for 14, but we would have to pay back like $7 million probably over 40 years, instead of, instead of the 20. There's no commitment, if we move forward with this loan, there's nothing saying we have to take the money. It would, because it's going to be nine months before that we're going to get through this process and hear whether or not we got it. But if we do get it, and if we get those same kind of terms, we still don't start making payments on the loan unless, you know, we start moving forward with particular elements. So in the early years, it's going to be design costs. And so design costs are not going to be that much. We're going to have to repay whatever the debt service is for the line cost. We anticipate doing these projects, again, if council thinks that they're important enough to try to get done, you know, on a reasonable basis, over the next five years. I don't know what the impacts specifically would be on rates. We are still having those discussions, and, you know, and so all of that, we won't move forward, I'm sorry, we may move forward with a small portion of this, possibly to start the study for the relocation of the tank, but we're really not going to start building anything until we have sorted out all the projects that we have to fund and how we're going to do it. So this hopefully will lock us in to the terms that we just got, and for a significant project. There are still potentially other projects that are on the list that can be done, you know, years out, but we're asking now to be able to try to capture and lock in the rates and the conditions to authorize the mayor to sign the application.
I kind of remember, isn't there a line that goes off the end of Screw Street, under the creek?
There is. What I'm saying is that that line goes from around the RV park and then through parts of the city, so if it breaks anyplace before that, you don't have water. This would go, would take the water right from around the RV park, out 101, and in in another direction with a flexible pipe.
No, I understand.
Okay, yes.
I just thought there was a, because there's one under the bridge, and there's one off the end of Screw Street. No?
Okay. Isn't that the same location, Sam? What am I missing?
Oh, wow. Screw Street is going, would cut right, you know, where the lifeguard tower is stored?
I was told that there are two subaqueous lines, so that is possible.
Yeah.
But they're both fed by lines that go through the city.
Yeah.
As opposed to outside of it. Not, I'm sorry, not outside of it, but further away from the area.
Okay. No, I'm just, do you have something?
Yeah. I'm concerned about this. I feel that I don't feel 100% for the need or the clarity that we've been given on this. It's, it sounds so open-ended. It's like, I want to borrow money, but I really don't know how much I want to spend. It concerns me, and so I'm not comfortable with this.
Understood. And again, this is just for the application purposes. You would, you would vote on every single project as we go forward. And also, it doesn't authorize staff to take any action. No loan can be accepted, except with.
I don't want to just take a loan out for the heck of it.
We're not.
I mean, it bothers me to, to do it like that. I think we should go for a specific thing that we think we need, which you said at first you thought you did, and then, oh, by the way, there's this other stuff that we don't know. I like more time and more information.
Okay, and you will have more information.
What's the rush?
At March 9th deadline for the application.
Applications. Applications are so different in a municipal sense.
You can't have another application later on.
It may not even be offered.
Yeah, we don't even know if the terms will still be there. No. If it goes for another six months, for example, it's, this list of projects would go up like a quarter million dollars. So there is a cost to waiting, and there's no, I mean, in my mind, the way I'm looking at it, there's no downside to get this going, because potentially, we have the ability to get a 50% principal forgiveness. With my intention on this, because we could go for a series of smaller projects, I want to lock that in for as much money as we can get. Everything that we do after this will be a project that will be approved by council through the budget process. And we do not start paying, we only.
We can say no at any time. We're just getting the process.
I'm not convinced we need this amount of money.
The amount, and again, we, the council, we talked about the water supply resiliency. And the general, you have, you said, you know, absolutely yes, but I keep asking you, is it something we need to do? If it's something that we need to do, this is a way to potentially fund it and get, get it down to half price. So you're not, but you are not saying that we will do everything. The only thing that's been added in this is that we were only talking about getting water down, you know, so we can get it out of a fire hydrant in case of an emergency. What is added in this is a more reliable line to the north end, since we're getting watered down that far. And then also, the line that we have that runs south down to the Tolavana Tank, which is going to be necessary to provide pressure, you know, and potentially water, you know, down the road for folks in the north, I'm sorry, the south end, is a concrete tank. Or, I'm sorry, not a concrete tank, it is a concrete line. And so that's not going to do well in a seismic situation. So what this does is say, all right, we're going to do, we're hedging our bets, that we'll be able to get water from the springs, get it treated, get it, get pressure in the system, get water down so that we can take care of, like, a water station or something, so that within three days, we can start providing water to people. And we will also already have in place a backbone that's very likely to survive anything that happens, to be able to get water to the north end, and then actually down to the south end, too. So these are questions that ultimately, you're going to have to make decisions on, whether or not it's worth the funds, whether or not you think that the risk is high enough that we need to spend this money. But, and we don't have to do this, but we will, I don't know what the next cycle starts, and I don't know if the conditions would be the same as what we just got.
And the figures came from a recent study, right? Right, the water resiliency study?
Yes. It was, what we did is, we sorted out some of the things that were in the master plan, some stuff, you know, that was agreed upon, some stuff was not. But what I, we have asked the engineers to do is to isolate the, from the springs, from the springs down, so that we have the highest possibility that there will be water in the city for people to drink in date, like, by day three. And then what we also asked this time is like, okay, well, that's good, you've got this little place where everybody can come to, but you already have a line, this is a high likelihood of breaking, and then you have another one that has a relatively low chance of being in place to get water to the north end. And so we added that. If you decide to not do those, any part of those projects, then we just don't, you know, apply for a loan, you know, further into the process as we go. This is just to hedge our bets.
There's no obligation to take any of the loans. There's no obligation to pay anything until you do take the loan. And at that, approximately half of that principal never has to be paid back. The other half is that, if it's like the current one, what, 1%?
1% for 20 years, this would probably be 30 or 40.
So the, it doesn't go on your balance sheet, it doesn't go as an obligation to pay off $12 million. It's standing out there if and when we need it. And each project would be individually approved by the council, and drawing down on that fund, and we would begin to pay interest on that at 1% once we've drawn the money down, not based on the total amount of the loan, just what we spent in that year. And.
I'm still not convinced that it's necessary.
Well, why would you not take it when it's being offered? You don't.
That's how I feel, Mike.
Well, no, I mean, there's got to be a reason, though, Rob.
Well, okay. Respect my decision.
Well, I just want to know what your reasoning is, maybe I'm missing something.
The reason we wouldn't want to take a.
Everybody can vote for it.
I'm not, I'm just curious. I'm curious. Because it sounds, it sounds to me kind of like we're asking to take out a credit card. And we don't have to pay back anything until we actually sit by something with it. So.
And there is a chance to be able to only pay off half.
Yeah, and then you get a big discount check afterwards, kind of. So the fact that, yes, this is a big list of items that we may or may not want to do, we have yet to discuss about those, and we can say no to all of them if we want to. But to apply for this potential loan that gives us a pretty good rate, that doesn't seem to be available anywhere else, now's a good time to do it.
I did like your analogy to the credit card, because if you've got it, often people spend it because they got it.
In this particular case, we have to spend it on these projects unless we revise our application, and that would only be done with your authorization. And we are not obligated to do any of these projects, even if we are awarded the loan.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Okay.
Sure.
So this is just a consideration. Do we want, don't really need a motion on this.
I think we need a motion to authorize you to sign the application.
Right, it's our deadline.
Right. Okay.
And if I can ask for maybe a little bit broader, is that the mayor be authorized to sign any documents that the mayor's signature is required on, not necessarily just the application? I don't know of anything else that might come up, but if there was something else. And I think the way that we resolved this earlier was that if the mayor does sign something that was not specifically authorized, but we have to do it to meet a deadline, we notify you and talk about it the next council.
Anybody have a motion?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign water supply resiliency loan documents.
Any more discussion? Anybody have anything for go-to-the-order communications?
Are we going to talk about the...
Sure.
Okay, there were two numbers here.
Wait up, Chris.
And one has to do with overnight camping warnings. The other has to do with transient contacts. Did they have any correlation with each other?
Do you know, a lot of the times, the transient contact are just under a tarp in a sleeping bag somewhere in the city. Most of the overnight camping we have are just people sleeping in their cars, yeah, or in their R Vs.
Thank you.
We had something, I, for the life of me, can't remember what it was. We want to ask?
We're about, we've got a meeting next week, we'll do it again.
I do have a, just a little suggestion. The purchase of the Cannon Beach Elementary School is so important to the citizens of Cannon Beach, that when we do actually sign the contract, and it is actual thing, and we really do, I kind of like to see a little celebration or notation of some kind that would involve the community. Is there, is that something we could think about?
Sure.
While we're doing our due diligence?
Yeah, and even, I mean, we could have a grand opening or whatever with the scissors, just it's our property.
Welcome to the new gathering place.
Yeah.
Like when you buy your first home, you have the photos with the keys?
Yeah.
And I think that was kind of what we were talking about, considering having a work session just on what to do in the future and where we're going for that.
Yeah, it's like, we're finally acquiring it, and so, it's what next? And that's where we start talking about ideas, order of items, different ways to accomplish things, because we will be in a position to have additional funds, like, in July. So, there are things that we can be doing if we know what we want to do, and also, you know, partnerships that we can start, and relationships, that kind of thing. So, we do kind of, I like the term gathering place, but if I had to draw a picture, then I don't know what I would draw, so we got to figure out what that's going to be.
One of my ideas, we were talking about, it would be a discussion both about the park part, because we have a master plan, sort of, for that, and the building, and invite some of the concerned committees that are already around, just to do something. Okay. We don't need to set that date yet.
No, we don't know the date.
Is there an agreement that it would be a good idea to have a dedicated workshop, and then also for the public to do input?
It'd be right around July 1st, I would guess. I mean, that's when, when we're set to close is July 1st.
That's when we start. You got to do it before July 1st.
Yeah.
You got to be ready and hit the ground.
Okay, cool. That was it.
And I remember one thing. I mean, this is a long meeting, I appreciate everybody that's sat here, but in particular, I want to commend somebody that would spend their birthday here. I'm not going to mention who it is, but somebody who...
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Nancy.
I thought you weren't going to mention my name.
Happy birthday to you.
All I can say is, Bruce, you really know how to hold a party.
And I am going to still pay for that. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay.
Remember the last time we sang to you, Nancy?
No.
Merry Christmas?
Well, that's right. We did a...
We have a birthday at Christmas too.
No, we did caroling.
Oh, that's right.
We were walking down the street, and Nancy...
You kept me in the middle of the row.
She stopped right in front of the bank, and so, we were in front of the Hallmark, so we just started singing. And, you know, she was just like looking in her mirror, and nobody came. We sang like a whole song, and finally, she just...
Colleen, did you?
Well, yes, thanks for remembering that.
I think, Colleen, do you have something?
I always remind you about a few meetings coming up.
No.
And, of course, you have next, next Tuesday. It's about 11, 10 items on the work session, and that's a big night too. But we have the 25th at 5:30 for the preliminary budget meeting here in the council chambers. We have April 2nd with the chamber board at 8:00 AM here in the council chamber. And then, we did change the meeting from Tuesday, April 7th, to Monday, April 6th. And just remember that, and hopefully, folks, and all that, but just a reminder.
Thanks, Colleen.
I will not be able to attend the March 25th meeting.
Ooh, so, nothing will be on your budget. Okay.
We'll get you all the materials.
Yeah.
So, you'll be up to date.
I may be able to participate by phone.
Sure.
Then, we are adjourned. Thank you.